She has to get in on recording.
Okay.
This to be live on YouTube or no?
Doesn't have to be, does it? I mean.
Okay, I have you guys recording.
Okay, it's six ten conservation meeting is now open. Are we going to suspend from? The minutes of the previous meeting until our next regular meeting?
Yes, that was my plan.
Okay, so this is a special meeting for enforcement orders that we have pending. Lisa, would you like to start with the?
Yeah.
First order.
I'd be happy to, so. Since our last meeting. In response to ten fifty William Street, the Reed Brothers Limited Partnership. We had spoken at the last meeting about going on a site visit on March first, which was Monday, last Monday. So Jim Digits and I went on the site visit. And it was the first time I'd ever been on site. However. It was a little disturbing. I mean, you know, you can see the cutting from William Street, but. To see so much filling along the cart path. And a buried culvert, and then when you get to the back, which is a field. We found several. Decent sized piles of debris and waste that were dumped there. Jim, Jim was there, so he might want to chime in and say what he thought he saw and all that. In the meantime, I just wanted to say. The filling was occurring in the BBW. And along the riverfront in some portions. Definitely in, in the entire portion was a riverfront, I'm sorry. So whether it was hundred, one hundred foot or two hundred foot riverfront. I'm not exactly positive, but I think most of it was within the one hundred foot. And it's all within an ORW, which is the Outstanding Resource Water. So the Segregated River is the water supply.
Right up to the tree, right in the middle of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, yeah, some of the fill was rocks and fill that they have put, they put in directly into the wetlands. Others was material was wooded from construction. And then there was a small pile of asphalt that was dropped in the. BBW along the waterfront, within the two hundred foot waterfront property. Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah, so. That was disturbing. I took multiple pictures. If you guys wanted to see them, I can show them to you, but. Basically, I followed up with a. Email discussion and an email to Andrew, who was our circuit rider. But in, I want to read to, in the discussion. He stated. He, there will be three options for this. And basically, we can send. Sent him an email, which I did today. And attach the previous enforcement order and the letters. And a little bit of a summary of, with a timeline. So I did, and, and that. Part of that was to let him know that they had previously filed, I found. And with Charlie and Jim's help, in two thousand seventeen, they had filed. For a house there. They were going to use that as a driveway, but because. They found out that the fire chief wasn't going to allow twenty, anything smaller than twenty foot wide drive. They withdrew their application with CONCOM and DEP. So basically, Andrew told me there's going to be three options here. If I emailed him, which I did today, he can schedule a site visit with us. And the property owner, owner, and anyone from the CONCOM who wants to go. To discuss their need to comply. Basically, that is the mild response. So then they have an opportunity to comply. Number two, he said if TEP ends up getting involved, there's usually large fines. Due to them not complying, so. Once, you know, he's not the enforcement division. But if he sees that they need, there are, once he goes out on site. He sees that there are enforcement issues like we are seeing. He can suggest to the DEP enforcement officer to come out. With us on another site visit. So we're going to start mild, I guess. If we wanted to. And then the third, you know, option is, if they're not responsive, we can take them to court. And discuss with town council, so we know how that goes. So, you know, I, I got an email back from Andrew after I sent him one today. If you guys want, I can read it to you. He said, please schedule a site visit with the property owner and the commission and informing them. That I will be present to provide technical assistance on compliance and enforcement. As stated on the phone, my presence at the, as a circuit rider. Is to provide assistance to the commission, as I do not do enforcement on behalf of the DEP, but I can recommend enforcement if needed. I'm available and it gave the times. And then he said, I, I will have COVID related questions that will need to be answered in writing to everyone who's in attendance twenty four hours in advance of the site visit. Everyone in attendance will need to agree to wear a mask and stay six feet apart, regards, Andrew. So. You know, after we talk about it here, you know, I, I'll move forward however you guys want. I think the only way to really get in touch with the Reeds right now is through certified mail. So I can send priority, so they get it immediately. And we can schedule something with Andrew in the meantime, and you know, tell him. Exactly what date and time we're going to be out there. And. And then we'll just take it from there. That's my suggestion after talking with Andrew. That's how we have to approach this. However, the CONCOM is certainly. Okay to start issuing three hundred dollar a day fines. We can do that too, in addition to this. Because that's on our bylaw. Violations to our bylaw.
I think the best course of action is to make an appointment with Andrew. Get young Reed, when, when you send him his letter. To give him a time and date, and we can work right around that.
Yeah.
EDP's fines were a hell of a lot more excessive than ours.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Lisa, was the, anybody, the property owner there for the visit as well?
Nope.
Was he? Lisa, you were told not even to meet with the individual that came to our meeting, correct?
Correct. I spoke with a select person and she recommended do not meet. He's not, he's not a representative of them, so whatever he says doesn't even, you know, I mean, he can't legally represent them. And it's an uncomfortable situation.
Okay, if we were to say in this letter that's going to go out to them. That as of a particular date. That land. We want to have a visit, the land will be cleared of debris. No widening will take place and we will inspect. If it is not done properly, fines will begin as of a particular date.
I don't want them in there working at all until DEP sees anything, so I don't.
Then maybe we should go route two then, notify them that we want action from their part.
Well.
There's one big problem up there. You got two different parties. You have the Reed Brothers, which is down a one, that's Leonard. And that's the farm. And then you have his nephew. Who I don't even know his legal status. Of Reed Brothers Farms. And like I say, the nephew is the one. That did this. And like I say, you've got, like I say, you've got two different entities here. And, you know what I mean, Leonard. As a lifetime resident, his family's been here multi-generations. He was a farmer. And like I say, he kind of resents some of it. He's always been good to the town. He feels this is a slap to him. But you gotta bring his nephew under control.
He is the landowner and therefore he is the one responsible for what goes on his land.
I realize, I realize, Jim, but. Like I say. You know what I mean? Yeah, you know, you're going after Leonard because he is the owner, and I realize that, but. Leonard's always been a good neighbor. But like I say, his nephew is kind of like, you know, in the middle of this and stirring this up. So somebody's got to get a hold of Stevie. And you know, and I mean, go from there.
Well. Leonard's getting the letters. I think the letters are going directly to him, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, he's, he's, I don't know the legal owner, I mean. Roger just passed away, who was Stevie's father. And I don't know how the LLC develops, breaks down, or who's next in line or whatever, you know what I'm saying?
You know, I understand what you're saying, and I, and I believe. Whatever you're saying is being accurate. But that's up to them to settle. Our job is to protect the river and to prevent. The, the debris from being. Continue, the dumping of it to be discontinued and removed. You know, we can't go after everybody who goes by the property. Unfortunately. He has to stand up and say to his nephew. You've got to stop because I'm, you know, we're going to be in trouble.
They are in trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, and the limited partnership, I'm pretty sure that Steve is part of the partnership. So it doesn't matter whether Leonard gets it, I mean, or, or Steve gets it, or both.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of go to the owner of record.
Yeah, that's what we're sending it to.
Yeah.
Limited partnership.
Yeah.
Correct. I agree with Charlie, just to make an appointment with Andrew and the owner of Record and whoever wants to go out there. And take it from there.
Yeah, so basically what Andrew was saying, if number one doesn't work out and they don't show up. Then they automatically go to number two, comes in enforcement, you know.
And that's where to go.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna start this way. But in the meantime. Does the Conservation Commission want to? You know, we had spoken several times and it's been months, and you guys said you wanted to start issuing fines. Bill was adamant he wanted to issue fines.
Let's give him a time limit to respond for this meeting. And if he doesn't respond, then we, then we start finding and notifying the state.
Can, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, there's a night, well, one second, there's a, so you have to identify yourself on your phone if you could.
This is Jim.
Jim.
Can you guys see me?
Okay, that's us, Jim.
Yes.
I don't know if, I don't know if cable.
I don't see.
Name on there. Oh, there it is.
I can see and hear you guys, but I don't know if you can see me.
No.
I'm going to send you something that's going to request to start your video, Jim. Should hope to pop up on your screen. I just sent it.
Okay, got it.
There it is.
Hello, everybody.
Jim, Jim Digits, one second, if I could. Just because of being part of different meetings, I believe. When you call for a vote right now, you've got to ask each one by name. Like a roll call, and then they'll say aye or nay or whatever it is, okay?
Okay.
Just moving forward from the, my last meetings.
Okay, so you mean a, a vote to?
When somebody seconds it, you're going to say. Charlie, and he'll say either aye or nay, and then you go down the line, Jack, and then Jim.
Okay, so.
Like a roll call.
Are we at the point where we're looking for a motion now?
Uh, well, we're still talking.
Okay.
I, I like the idea of when people are in violation of taking steps. Not reparations right away, not fines right away, it's not the right thing to do. Now, to get the guy out there and us out there, and if he doesn't respond, then we have something to talk about. But he can be fined under the enforcement order, and the fines are a hell of a lot more than three hundred dollars a day. But the thing is, get DEP on board. If they, if they. Determine that he's in strict violation, and there's no question that he is, and the trash doesn't help matters. It's better to get DEP muscle behind this. Than us going to court and collecting three hundred dollars a day and getting nothing done, or never getting paid.
I agree. And once, once they see the resource areas being affected, DEP, I think, would act.
No, I definitely think they'd be disturbed by that, yeah. Yeah, they definitely will.
They're in the rivers act, they're. A hell of a lot closer than two hundred feet to the Segregated River.
Right.
Everybody down here.
Yeah, they're in the one hundred foot riverfront, most, most portion of that, yeah.
There's twenty feet, Lisa.
Right.
Hundred foot.
But I mean, that's how you, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
The letter is going to say that we will have. We are inviting you to a meeting with DEP. We have contacted DEP and. We are inviting you to a meeting on site with DEP. The meeting will happen at this. Day and time. And basically, if you are not present, we will continue to move forward with the enforcement with DEP. My dog's going to start now, too. Great.
Okay. So, okay, so that, that was the intent of the letter. Is there any, any more discussion on it, or shall we have a motion to accept that, that format?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I've made a motion to accept the letter that Lisa's planning on writing.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, Jim, Susan just seconded. Okay, all in favor, and I will ask you one by one. Charlie?
Aye.
Jim Souza.
Aye.
Jack.
Aye.
And I guess I'm the only one left, and I say aye.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, is there another, any other items, Lisa, coming up?
Oh yeah, there's two more items.
Okay.
So. Two, three, nine, six Pleasant Street. I had gone out there prior to the last meeting. I had gotten, we had gotten a call from, and a butter who was concerned about cutting on the bank. I went out there and I found. They not only had cut. They had cut herbaceous and woody vegetation. They had a dock and they had dragged the other half of it up. So they must have done that to drag it up. But they didn't need to cut the woody vegetation or the vegetation within the marsh to do that. It's a little confusing as to why they had to go that far, but I guess it was probably partially for a view as well. So I had a discussion with DEP about that. But in the meantime, I had done a little research. And I was a little confused as to why. Two, three, nine, six. On the assessors currently shows. Shows an older photo of the original colonial that was there. I found out that in two thousand, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. I guess they applied for, they applied for planning board variance, and it was kind of a big to do in town. On November. Twenty seven, two thousand seventeen was the decision from the zoning board. They allowed them to build it. But what I found in the. In the assessor's office was a little different. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so in the assessor's office, they had submitted. You can view building permits in the assessor's office. Basically, I viewed it and found that. The application said, a brief description, convert a single family dwelling into two family dwelling. But certainly, if you look at the air photos and you look at the sketch and. Then you look at the plan they submitted to the planning board and the zoning board, I mean, the zoning board. You'll see that. It's actually a fourteen hundred square foot addition within two hundred feet of the Trenton River. So this is the same owner that owns the lot across the street that was doing the cutting. We never went back and forth with Charlie. We never gave them a permit for that work. Which is a big deal. You don't, you don't build a fourteen hundred square foot addition with a new. Foundation and all within two hundred feet of the river without a permit from the Conservation Commission, so. You know, I did speak with DEP about it. And they're not even sure that they have a dock permit, a dock license. So they're looking into that.
Lisa.
Yeah.
Lisa, they don't need a dock license for a floating dock.
Okay. All right.
Dock, they need a license from DEP.
Okay, but the structure that's out there right now is on the bank. Did you guys permit that?
Nothing. Now, here's some file, and he should file.
Yeah, so.
Down the street, we had another case similar to this. He got a floating dock, he had to go through some vegetation, and he filed an IDA.
Right.
Maybe three hundred feet away from this property.
Yeah, so what we need to do is get them to file and demonstrate that they can, you know. Go through each performance standard. And if we need, if we want to, we are definitely. We definitely have the authority to require restoration for mitigation or. And, you know, anything like that. So if they can't comply with C, D, and E of the performance standards. We can, we can ask them to, what I'm thinking is, ask them to leave. The rest of that untouched. Stop parking the cars over there. Keep the twenty five foot no touch. Grown in for the birds. Leave it alone. You know, you didn't file, you should have filed, now you need to mitigate. Just.
Where is the site?
Two, three, nine, six Pleasant Street.
Is this south of Muddy Cove or?
Yes. So here's a photo of. The marsh from their front door. This is one of the photos they turned in to the zoning board. So. I don't have any. I don't have any current pictures of the house, but. You can go on any air photo more recent than two thousand eighteen, so two thousand nineteen or twenty, and you can see the new addition. It's fourteen hundred square feet, and it's to the south. Southwest of the original structure. So now this is raising red flags to the Board of Health too, because they're saying, well, we're not even sure that they have a septic. For the correct.
What number was that pleasant again?
Two, three, nine, six.
Normally you see in different towns, when somebody goes to the zoning board, there's a sign off for every single department. And I'm not, I don't know if we have that in place, or this doesn't happen in the future.
There used to be a sign off. It was a sheet and the Conservation Commission was called, and we checked. But that's, that wasn't done in this case.
Well, just so you guys know, there were multiple discussions and the decision as well, that they're in the flood zone. So they knew that, you know. But yeah. I agree, there needs to be a better process.
And they could probably send a memo to them and saying, once something comes to you, or any department, that we should be notified.
Jim Agia started this. A permit process. And they had a signing sheet, and we used to get notified. Nancy would call, or Jim would call, but mostly Nancy, and you'd go in, you had to sign the damn sheet. How this didn't happen, I have no idea.
Yeah, well, Jim told me it's only for new construction, so I don't know what he considers new construction. So we need to, we need to talk about it. We, we can maybe, maybe you guys want to take a ride by the individually. In the meantime, we have a meeting next week, and we can figure out exactly, you know, how we want to approach it. But something needs to be done. We can't just let it go.
What did DEP say about the current house? Do we have any jurisdiction over that?
Of course. We said, he said that we should get them to file and. And prove that the performance standards were met in the new construction, and if they weren't. And if they can't prove that, then, because we don't know that, you know, they even had erosion controls out there or anything, then we can. Yeah. Then we can, we can require mitigation, and it can be in the form of restoration. We've got that twenty five foot no touch. I say we use it right there.
Okay, and you know what the big thing is, if they've got fourteen hundred square feet, and they got two or three bathrooms. That's going to be a big deal with their septic system.
Well, yeah, so I already put the bug in Todd's ear right away. He, he said he was really surprised because he looked at the permit application. So, you know, going forward, this is kind of the struggle I think we're going to have. Is that, you know, there's a lot of handholding around here to, to know, like, are they applying for actually what they're really doing? I. You know, I, I'm trying to keep good, good communication with the building department. I've talked to them about maybe getting, getting in on their permit. Application submission. So, you know, they're the only ones that use that online. Application process right now, and I guess they pay money, and if CONCOM wants to join on board for that. Next fiscal year, we can try to do that. Which I think, I don't have any problem doing that. I think it might make things easier. However. For example, right now, I'm, you know, I, I reached out to Nancy last week and I said. Are there any projects that concern conservation that I need to know about? I'd be happy with a list. And. And she said, all the applications that are before us. All the permits that are before us are online, you have to log in, so. It requires logging in. You know. It's not as simple, like, here's a stack, like Todd gives me a stack, or Roz emails me each perk. You know, like you, Charlie did. Here's the, here's the location, you know, go check it out. So in this case, I have to actually review all their permits. I have to go through that whole database. To see. It's just time consuming, and I don't know if that's the best way to do it or not. Or if they, like you said, have a sign off for almost everything. I mean, it would be better to do more than less. Other towns do a little more.
Lisa, if I could.
Yeah.
When I used to work in Lakeville in the Board of Health. We used to have, so the building department had that program, almost like I believe Dayton has. So just say somebody was applying for a shed. We would get notified. We'd actually have to open up our plan to see where they were putting that shed if it was. Um, in an area where the septic was or where the reserve area was. So we could sign off on that, and I believe conservation was the same thing. They were gonna put it in a shed, but where exactly were they gonna put it? I'm sorry, they would have to sign off as well, so.
Okay, yeah, so but until that gets implemented, there's, there's not much, you know. There's no real sign off for me until that gets implemented.
Can they, can they email you for now or something?
Yeah, I mean.
You'd be inundated with emails.
Yeah, I mean, I told him I want sheds. What's that?
I said, they probably gave up the sheet when town halls were closed. Not open to the public.
One sheet, one sheets come around, just one.
I guess it's something to talk about with them.
Yeah, we have to, um. Because. You know, if I have to log in every day, I'd rather know exactly when it's updated, you know, it, it just seems. Back, a little backwards for me to have to do that, but. Does anyone else have any suggestions?
The only thing I have to say is if, uh, if, uh, D P's recommending, uh, what you had said, I would go with their recommendations.
Yeah, so tell them, they, write them a letter, tell them they need to file an notice of intent. And then take it from there.
And then we can view their plans and where their septic is, we, we can go through everything. And we can make them comply to the best possible way.
Right.
Okay.
So we have an ass built of some sort.
So, all right, so Lisa, we're going to empower you to write that letter to send it to them. And then hopefully, uh, we'll hear from them by, um, was our next meeting about the eighteenth?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I usually like to give ten day response, but you guys want. You think? A week's gonna be enough?
Well, today, today's the eighth, right?
Yep. Oh, yeah, so if I write it tomorrow, I mean, it's barely ten, but yeah.
But, you know, and, and at, at the minimum, they have to come to our, uh, before us. Which is gonna be difficult because of the, of, of the Zoom meetings. But it still is possible to address the issue.
Well, I don't want them to come before us to discuss anything until we have everything, you know what I mean, like.
Okay, well then, let them, okay, request in this letter that they send us the plans for the house, including. A distant, a map showing distances from the river, where the septic system is. Uh, okay, so a detailed, uh, mapping of their property and all structures.
File a notice of intent with the ass built.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah. All right, that's what I was hoping you guys would say. You guys have to vote on that?
Yes.
Um, think so, Charlie? Okay, uh, we, okay, is there a motion then to have Lisa write this letter to the. Owners of, uh, twenty-three ninety-six Pleasant Street?
I'll make that motion. I motioned that the. Uh, letter be written by Lisa, explaining that they have to file with the commission. They're in violation of the Wetland Act and they have to appear before the commission and you can tell them what date and send them a. A link. They can appear in that next meeting.
And they must, or, and file as Lisa had said.
Yeah.
Is there a Jack or Jim, is there a second?
My second.
Okay, we, uh, Jim seconded first, all in favor?
That's the way you're gonna do it.
Okay, uh, Charlie? In favor? Uh, Jim? Jim Souza?
Hi.
Uh, Jack Crawford?
Hi.
And an eye for me. Okay.
Oh, yeah, all right, so this is a. So I was out there on that call and the butter who, for two, three, nine, six, and the butter who called me out there. Has a, a really large, unique property overlooking the river. And very historic value, all these stone walls and everything, so. Started telling me a little bit about the history of the trolley car and the trolley path. And the stone and the stone seat. And do you want to see the stone wall and the stone seat? And so I figured, hell, I haven't been over to the railroad right away and forever anyway, I'm already here, I might as well take a walk over there. So I go look and he says, see, there's the railroad right away and I look down and I go. Oh my, actually, I looked up. Oh my goodness, there was a huge violation. Enormous, enormous, um, dumping grounds for. Construction debris, not just yard waste. Um, so his neighbor was, um, over there. So his neighbor was doing that. So Bill Farnett and I took a walk from Muddy Cove Lane in and we found. Several violations. Including that one, and then I invited Todd out, Todd and I walked in. We walked the entire length between Muddy Cove Lane and Hart Street. And we found one, two, three, four violations. Two of them are pretty large. One of them, um, like I said, had construction waste and various things, so that becomes a border health. Stormwater and building department issue. Um, and then the other one that was really large was, um, down towards the end of Hart Street. The person purposefully filled to flatten and level and fill in the railroad tracks, you know, to make it part of their yard. Meanwhile, there's. Uh, B B W with a stream and an outlet that goes into a catch basin. On Hart Street that eventually connects to the town river. So this is becoming, this is a big one, um, that's also a stormwater issue. So I notified the stormwater committee, um, to Todd. And obviously, he was there, um. And we agreed that it needed to be a unified approach with the other boards. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on what's going on.
Lisa, was this property on the west side of the railroad tracks?
No, the east.
Oh, okay. Because I know I was down there once, three, four years ago, Phil and I were, and I thought we had settled a problem. With, with people that they, they had cleaned it out and I, so it's different people then, okay.
The east side?
Yeah.
The riverside.
Yeah. The east side of the railroad right away. Between Muddy Cove.
Okay, so that. That's really being taken care of then by, by Todd and, uh, Jim for the most part, and there are other committees.
No, we, we need to write a, write a letter as well, but we want to do it all once. I just wanted to fill you guys in on that, because I knew that's a big one.
All right.
Lisa or multiple?
Multiple. Several.
You take this, Lisa?
I have, I have pictures, yeah.
Twenty-three seventy-one?
Excuse, uh, yeah. Yeah, hold on, let me, um, let me pull up. Let me pull up my pictures for a second and see. This picture doesn't give it. Okay, you can only. You can only see. Hold on, I'm, I'm gonna pull it up on my phone, but I don't know if you got, you guys aren't gonna be able to see it, that's the only thing.
I pulled it up online, Lisa.
Yeah, see the aerial, see the fill in the aerial, you can actually see the.
Bother with an aerial photo, but I just took properties. I can see where the railroad, uh, with the, the wetland area is on the railroad. I see a connection from County Street. Running into this wetland area.
Oh, yeah.
And what I did find, that there's, uh. D P keeps track of wetlands that are altered. They, they have W C dash seventy-six dash twenty-nine alteration. That property belongs to Franz Kuchenbauer. And he filled it in, he filled it in completely.
Well, Franz is one of them, but I mean, I have the other property owners here. I was just trying to wait until the other boards and I coordinated to, you know. Because we are on a meeting. I didn't. The, the, the bit. No. No, Whitmore is actually the, it's on Whitmore's site. But Ko- Kuchenbauer was dumping debris. On his lot, um, sixty-five A, I believe. Was sixty-six, one of those or both of those, but it's Whitmore that's. It's Whitmore and.
Has the wetland change on his property?
Yeah, Whitmore and V A U G H T, so it's lots sixty-five and fifty-five that have the largest violations.
That's twenty-three seventy-one. Is, uh, Whitmore.
Twenty-three seventy-one and. Jeez, what's the other address? I have the map and lots here. Okay, and the other one is two, four, seven, oh, Pleasant.
Well, Kuchenbauer is Pleasant Street too.
Yeah, I know, yeah, he does have some fill, like I said, he's got mostly trees and, and yard waste.
This is dirt. It's filled right in.
Hold on, let me get on this.
Railroad track was walkable from. Muddy Cove Lane, right to Hart Street, was. Kuchenbauer then, a piece of property that he owns and he gave himself entrance to, uh. Route one, one thirty-eight.
Yeah, I know, I did see that. Well, is that in a wetland? I mean, it's hard to tell there.
It wasn't a wetland, just filled now. That's where the wetland changes.
Yeah, well, that's one of them. Yeah. Yep.
And that's the worst violation, because he filled it from end to end. And both sides of the, of the property that he owns there. It's a small lot, but it's still part of Kuchenbauer's property.
Yeah, he's got the gate on County Street now. I have him highlighted too. I have that one highlighted and Whitmore and E N O S and, and Bo. However, you pronounce that. So. Yeah. Not good. But I wanted to bring those things to your attention, um.
Lisa.
Yeah.
A slight divergence on Pleasant Street. I was, I drove through there, I guess it was Sunday. And, uh, I saw a trailer on the west side. And the, they made a. I don't know, they filled it with sand next to, uh, the wetlands. The wetlands are that high pampas grass or, there's another word for it. Uh, right across from the river. Looks like, uh, something that they shouldn't have done.
Okay.
Uh, it's not too far from, uh, uh, twenty-three seventy-one, it's, it's. But it is on the west side of Pleasant Street, uh, and they filled it, and like I said, they have a trailer there.
Um, is it, can you give me an address or a map?
No. No, there, there, there's no address there. It's, it's a, it's a grass lot. You know where the ball field's on the backside of the ball field? That's down there. So what's that, Main Street? It's on the, the very backside of that. It, the, that, that wetland extends all the way over and it's on the south side of that wetlands. And I'm sure it's, it's wetlands there too, and their trailer is right up against the, the grasses. With sand for, I don't know, uh, maybe just to be dry when they get out of their trailer.
Okay, do, do you want to take a ride by there? So I'll try, take a ride up main, down there.
Well, I'm not gonna be free tomorrow.
That's okay.
But it's, uh, well, you, you're just gonna see a trailer and you're gonna see, uh, uh, maybe a, a, a thirty by twenty. Lot of sand.
Okay, on main.
No, not on main, on Pleasant Street, it's, it's the river. I'm sorry.
You mean water?
It's right across from the river.
Is it Pleasant or is it Water Street?
I don't know now.
Okay.
But if you go.
Here, I'll show you a map and you can maybe point. Can you see this?
The map disappeared.
Hey. So you can get your bearings. He has Muddy Cove Lane, right here.
No, I think it, I, I think it's north of that. It, gee. It, it might, it might be, uh.
North of this?
You know, I really don't remember, Lisa, but it's in that vicinity. It's either on the lower road. Uh, see the Pleasant Street or the other lower road.
Water Street.
Water Street.
Water Street.
Yeah, water.
They're the Totten Yacht Club.
It backs up, backs up to a ball field, so I'll find the, but, but find the ball field. No problem, I'm looking to that. So it looks like we'll have a hands full this spring with enforcement and restoration. So I don't, you guys don't need to vote on anything there, but, um, real quick. I just wanted to let you know that we met with Brett on the budget. Right here. Brett. You know, did say it was, it was good that I did my research. He's not sure how the FinCom's going to respond. And the town, new town administrator is, he started today, so that's all good stuff. What we talked about, um. Brett and I on the phone quickly was that. If you guys want to allow me to get reimbursed for my phone, because right now I don't. Then. A letter just needs to be written to the Board of Selectmen, the Town Accountant and the Town Administrator requesting that a new line item. the Town Accountant and the Town Administrator requesting that a new line item be set in place for a phone stipend. And that's exactly what Todd gets. He gets his phone stipend. So if we want to do that, which I was hoping you guys would, because I'm using my phone as like a personal hotspot now for this iPad and everything. I'm getting all the calls forwarded and I don't even have an office phone right now. So.
Okay, all right. Or I'm gonna stop you right there, Lisa. Charlie, would you make a motion that Lisa write a letter to?
Hey, we have to write.
No, no, she can write it. We, we'll sign it.
It's what it is. It's, it's sixty dollars a month for 12 months. That comes out to be seven hundred and twenty.
What was the third party that had to be notified?
Okay, Town Administrator, Town Accountant, Board of Selectmen.
Okay, got it.
You're gonna, you're gonna write it then, Charlie?
Yeah, I can write that letter. We talked to. And we, we, this is why we're meeting.
Okay, you write it and, and I move that, oh no, someone else has to make the motion. I'm acting chair. That we pay Lisa for a phone stipend. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we write the necessary letters to allow Lisa a stipend for her phone.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey.
Thanks, guys.
We got all of us. Poll, poll, poll.
Jim, poll, Jim, poll every single person again, if you don't mind.
Okay, Jim?
Aye. Yay.
Okay, Jack?
Yay.
Charlie?
Aye.
Okay, it passes.
Great.
Kevin, is this just because of Zoom that they?
Yeah. So what I, what I learned is the selectmen did it and they, they were questioned on it. We also had to do it because we were questioned on how we were doing it. So knowing that, that's why I mentioned it to the board.
Okay.
So, just to.
I just have one. I appreciate you doing that. And I have one, I just have one more thing. So I guess the Board of Selectmen are gonna be discussing budgets at the next several meetings. Of course, I don't know the exact date yet that they'll be talking about conservation. And the Finance Committee will be as well. So when I get that information, I'll give it to you guys. And it would be just really helpful if, you know, you guys could be there to back me up about why there's a need. Because I, I can't be the only one saying I, I deserve to make a fair wage. I mean.
Okay, so you're gonna give us the information, okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Appreciate it.
Okay. Is there, is there anything else or are we complete?
I think that's it, unless Charlie or anyone else had anything.
No, I'll start with me. Jim Souza, you finished?
I'll sit.
Jack, you finished?
Yeah, I'll sit.
Kevin, you sat?
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm set, so I'll hear, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, and the time is seven oh three. Is that seconded?
Yeah.
All in favor?
One of the time, Jim. I'm in favor, aye.
Jim, Ja- uh, um, Jack?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Okay, and I, and yes. Meeting adjourned. At seven oh three.
Thanks, guys.
Be safe. Have a good night.
Be healthy.